The Village of Leonard zoning board of appeals to order. Let's stand for the pledge allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Here.
Swack, here. Mr. Moore, here. Zeno, here.
Okay, so we have the agenda for us. Would anybody like to make the motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll put it up.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so before we get into the nitty gritty of the meeting, we just have some procedural items that our secretary Jennifer Swack is going to read aloud.
If you need to go, always again. Check, that was a review for work. Welcome to the Village of Leonard zoning board appeals meeting. Please listen to the rules and procedures for a public hearing. There are two rules that may affect our ability to proceed tonight. First, if a public notice was not posted 15 days prior to this meeting, we cannot hold the hearing tonight. Second, we must have four board members present to proceed. One, two, three, and four. When your matter is called, please stand and give your name and address. The chairperson will then swear you in and read the record of information we have and read the record of information we have for your application, input from various authorities, and any correspondence received on your application. The chairperson will then ask you to make your presentation to the board. After you have made your presentation, the board will ask questions, they deem appropriate, and then will ask your comments from the public. If you wish to speak for or against an application, we ask that you wait until you're acknowledged. Stand up, give us your name and address, tell us where your property is in relation to the property that is in question, and then place the record comments to the board, not the applicant. We must keep a record, and we cannot do that if people are talking over each other or cross conversations. If you have anything additional to say, please don't hesitate to do so, but keep in mind that you will be given only one opportunity to speak. After the public has spoken, the board may ask the applicant to answer questions that may have come up as a result of the public comment or for the applicant to summarize. When the applicant is asked to answer any questions, if that happens, it does not start the second round of public comments. Once the matter has been heard, various things may occur. The board may decide on the application immediately, or it may reserve decision. Reserving decision does not mean that the matter is approved or denied. It just means that the board needs more time to decide. They may want to go out and look at the site or may want to review the documents further before deciding. In either of those, the applicant will receive the board's decision in writing shortly after a decision is made. If the application is approved, that does not mean go ahead and start construction. A building permit would need to be obtained. Chairperson is on line.
Thank you. All right, so before us, we have Jennifer Arndale. She's applied for dimensional variance for 4571 Rosie Drive. Jennifer, could you please stand?
Hello, everyone.
Hi, you affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
Go ahead, and just one more little thing. It's just to help with record keeping. Would you just state your name for us again and your address?
Jennifer Arndale. Address is 4571 Rosie Drive, Leonard Estates, which is in Leonard Estates.
What would you like to tell us about your application?
So regarding my application, we'd like to put in a garage, which would be the size of a three-car garage, a 30 by 40. By doing so, if you look at the information I said, there's pictures, and I have a row of pine trees. Those pine trees are about almost, say, 30 feet in front of the house, but hard to tell because of the way the elevation of my house is. So my house is here, but then I have my driveway, and then it slopes down. And then I have a row of trees. Right behind that row of trees, the previous owner put in like a pad, like the paracory. And I'd like to put the garage right there, allowing me to be only 22 feet in front of my garage, in my house, right? So here's my house. So right here, so it'd be very difficult to see the difference from the road. But by doing this, it allows my property to continue the drainage to the back, which is all smug land. So it doesn't hurt the drainage there. Also, due to the aesthetics of Leonard Estates, it allows me to turn the garage so my garage doors don't face the road. They actually face my house, which is the way that all but one house is like that in my suburb, is that all of the garages are turned so you don't see them from the road. So like you'll see the opening of the doors from the road to make it a clean look throughout the neighborhood. So that's what I'm asking for. It's just that little bit of furniture so I can put in the garage there, allowing, A, for my property to drain gradually, and, B, to keep the aesthetic of my subdivision. I've already gone out to the subdivision, to the people. I posted it on our Leonard Estates Facebook page. I posted it there. Nobody, everyone is giving thumbs up hoping that we get it because again, they don't want the garage doors facing the road. Even if I placed it somewhere else on the property, A, there'd be an issue in the back because again, my garage doors have to face the road. And nobody in my suburb would want that because again, you're looking for aesthetics in the type of stuff that Leonard Estates is. So I've also gone to and made sure that all of my neighbors know within 300 feet of my subdivision and never gonna have an issue with this variance at all. They're all hoping that I get it. And I've set documentation on that as well. Again, we're trying to build it so it matches the aesthetic, the architecture style of our house there as well. So again, that it lines in architecturally and the way that the neighborhood is.
Okay, great.
Does anyone have any questions?
You know, at this point, what I need to do is see if any citizens have any comment. And then what we'll do is we'll kind of move on from there to ask some questions after that. So this is kind of like our first round. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comments or questions for Jennifer or for ourselves on the zoning variance? Okay. I'll take that as a no. So what we can do now is as zoning board of appeals members, we can direct our comments to Jennifer that we might have regarding her presentation on zoning variance. So are you the original owner? Did you build the home or was it already existing when you?
No, it was already existing.
It was existing? And was it just the home itself? Or was it, were there any outbuildings or any accessory buildings?
No, it was just the home.
Okay. Is the garage that you're looking to build, is anybody in any way going to live in that unit?
No.
Okay, so it won't be habitable? And are there any commercial activities that would be happening there? Are there other alternatives? I noticed on your diagram that you do have option two.
Yes, option two. If I put it all the way back there, that means I also have to put in another driveway on my property. By doing that, that's not gonna, if you want to say, more of a hardship due to the fact that now it's another driveway that has to go onto the property. And again, you're looking at the aesthetics of the neighborhood. And they're probably not gonna let me to run a driveway straight all the way back on one side. It would also, I'd have to be careful because I do have a well there, which would cause me issues as well, trying to get around that.
Yeah, no, I noticed that on your diagram, you didn't give us a well, right? You didn't show us where your well is located.
Ashley, is it, is it a front? It's not way up front, is it?
No, and the front is my septic field. Is the front of the house is the septic field. And then on the side of the house, to the south side, is my well. So then I planted a orchard on the side, which you can't really see with the diagram, but there's an orchard there. And so I have to remove those and try and get around to getting to the back.
So currently, in Leonard Estates, I know that there's, for lack of a better word, I don't want to use the word defunct because I can't think of what, how to say it, but the HOA guidelines that you currently have, they're not enforceable, right?
Correct, they are not.
Okay, so I know that there's a white house in there. There's somebody else whose garage is facing another direction.
That's the white house.
Right, right, okay.
It all comes down to that white house. So I guess what I'm trying, I'm trying to do is not be that white house because I'm trying to refuse a lot of neighbors by making sure I can get that garage doors turned. So again, it's going with the flow and the aesthetics of everything in Leonard Estates. Because even if I put it towards the back in that B location, the only way I can do that is with those doors facing the road.
Right, right.
So, and then I still have to put in another driveway. So that's why, when they built the house, they put in that pad already there. So it was like that they were going to like, like that was their idea is to build there anyways. The nice thing is that this would be behind my pine trees. So you really, you're not really gonna see it much. Do you know what I mean? You're not gonna see the variance. You're not gonna see the different paths. It's gonna be very, per se, from the road, it's gonna be very difficult to tell.
Pine trees are how tall?
How tall are the pine trees?
Forty?
Forty feet.
No.
They, like, they're the original pine trees of the property. So they're huge.
Any other planning commissioners have any other questions that they want to ask at this time?
Why did you go with the dimensions of 30 by 40? That's unusually large garage for two cars.
I need a three-car garage. I have, if you come to my house, which you're more than welcome, I have a lot of four-wheelers and a lot of motorcycles on your bikes.
Okay.
So my kids race.
Yeah.
So I need a place. What I'm trying to do is give them a place that they can work on everything and keep it there versus having a trailer or something else you're trying to work out of. That's just not feasible.
And there's no way of moving it back to the 20 foot so that you're at the same level off the road?
No, because if my driveway, like, when you come on my driveway, I've got my house here, and here's my driveway, it drops, like, it's like a sledding hill. So it drops, and then it drains out to the back.
Yeah.
So by doing that, I've gotta start putting in a ton of dirt, which now I'm starting to change the drainage of the property. And I'm worried about that with the pond, which is not mine in the back of the property, right? I'm sure everything drains out.
Yeah. I can see there's quite a drop-off that goes from the front to the back.
It is. So when I, I've had three different, like, builders come up and talk to me. And they're like, well, if you do this and move it forward and put it here, it'll cause less of the drainage issues. And I'm like, okay. So that is why I turn out.
Okay.
So I just wanted to give any other zoning board members an opportunity to ask any more questions. Okay, so Jennifer, what I'm gonna do at this time, just because this is not like a regular thing that we do, I don't want to share with you in the audience what our criteria is for making decisions. So we, as a zoning board, are kind of held to a criteria of three standards. And as far as the law goes, what we need to do is either, in your presentation that you made to us, is you need to prove that all three of those standards are something that you meet our criteria and we can say yes. If you don't meet one of those criterias, then we're kind of guided as a board to decide not to approve the variance. So the variances are, you know, they run with the property and with all future owners. So what we're gonna look at is, oh, I just made a couple little notes. So I just want you... Item number two. That the practical difficulties for both, which will result from value to grant for variance, includes essentially more than one inconvenience, inability to retain higher financial return or both. So basically, what they're saying is, is there another way that it can be done? Because is it just, is it a mandatory thing? Like, if your house, let's say, didn't have running water and you said, this is not an inconvenience. This is something that we need to live. And then that's something that we could adjust and change. But when it's something that's just a matter of inconvenience because you have more toys, for lack of a better word, then it creates a situation where we're, as a board, not supposed to just say, well, as much as what you say makes sense, you know, and it's logical, but we have to follow these standards and we have to meet them in order to make a judgment on this. Because there is an alternate location that you can use to build your accessory building without a variance, we wouldn't really be able to go ahead as a board and vote on that. Now, all the members, you know, get a vote, but just as far as basic standards that were held to, to make a ruling, that's kind of how we have to go. So...
Can I ask a question? What about like the other houses that we use? Porter Lane, they have their garage in front of their house. So that was built for the house that was pretty good. So I would test which their house. Their garage is built in front of their house. It's in the back of their house. It's the green house. I'm just questioning those.
Sure.
And now, I understand times can change. But again, I'm sure that there's alternate locations that those can go.
What happened in the past with prior administrations, or however long ago that was, you know, I can't speak to, you know, they're ordinance violations. They shouldn't have happened, but they did. But I think what we're trying to do is to set a standard and say, you know, these are what's set forth for a reason, for the basic overall well-being of the community. And that's kind of what we need to look to. And it is upsetting when you see things like that and know that you're trying to do all the things the right way. And, you know, it becomes difficult. So I definitely empathize with it, for sure. But it's just that...
One of the reasons I did this too was, A, again, because of the drainage of the property. So I don't, like, hurt that. But also due to that, because of our homes and Leonard Estates, and how they wanted a certain look, per se, in our suburb, which we bring in a lot of cancer equipment for the village.
Sure.
So I'm trying to keep that aesthetics going so that way it doesn't diminish anything within the neighborhood. And again, all of Leonard Estates knows that we're trying to build this. And they've all been very, very positive with it.
Right, right. And once again, us as a board, you know, it's difficult to make these decisions because, you know, you do have support of your neighbors. But we're not supposed to look at, when we make these decisions, things like that. We're supposed to look at, does this meet these standards? If it doesn't, we can't grant the variance. And so that's kind of the position that we're in.
So, okay, so right now you're telling me you can't grant any of those variances?
Correct. I would need a motion, obviously.
So I have a question. Then why would you go out to my neighbors and ask them if they have issues?
Because it's the law. I had to.
Okay, they've all approved that inside. Yes, they would rather have that versus my garage doors facing the road, which I totally get. No one wants to see that.
Right.
In the neighborhood.
Right, right. I realize it's a difficulty, you know? I do.
Okay.
Okay, so at this point, where we're at is, I'm wondering if we have any board members that would like to make a motion? If no one does, I can make a motion, and you can decide to vote to or for or against. I'll make a motion to deny the request for the front yard variance.
Excuse me. Yes, it's not the front yard. It's actually the side yard.
Right, but...
You just said front yard.
Well, the line of where your home starts, your house is set back...
It's actually 22 feet in front of the side yard variance for my house.
Right.
So you're talking like me to you. Like, and it's not much. Or again, it's due to the drainage of the property.
It's still called the front yard only because the line that runs from your front, like, your front door, across, straight across, anything from there to the road is considered front yard. So your variance, actually, the way it's listed, is asking for a front yard, not a side yard? So, does that track?
Okay.
So I make a motion to deny the request for the front yard variance, section 4.1, 4.17A by Mrs. Arndale for the catch, section 4571 Rosie Drive, because it does not meet standard two in section 24.06A. Further, this denial is due to these findings of fact that there is an alternate location where the homeowner can build the accessory building without a variance. I'd like to ask for a second on that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Could you roll call vote on that? Al Maraki, or maybe roll call vote on that? Because I'm stepping back into my old...
No, it's fine with me. Al Maraki?
Uh, no.
I'm sorry?
No.
No? Is, you say no to agree with the denial? Or to not agree with the denial?
Uh, I'd say two.
To agree with the denial?
Two.
Right, agree with the denial, okay. Doug, no way?
Agree with the denial.
Last one, one?
Here.
And Swack, I am going to actually disagree with the denial. Laurie?
Agree with the denial?
We have one, two, three, four. Agreed, and one disagrees for the record.
Okay, so the motion passes. Thank you. If there is no further dissent to come before the, yes?
The planning commission, please.
Yeah, we had a zoning board of appeals meeting today for the variance request.
So when's the next planning commission?
Um, next month, I think, right?
Yes. Well...
Well, possibly next month.
Yes. If there's business in front of the planning commission, I would be...
If we have business, we'll meet in October. If not, we will push forward. Do you have another date?
Do you have one? I think I want you to talk to your one here.
Okay, do you, would you like to make a request to be put on the agenda for the next meeting, the next time the planning commission meets? Okay, so you're going to be also, I know that you came to a village council meeting, and you asked to be put on the agenda for the village council. Do you want to stay on that one too?
Yeah, I've got two different things going, so yeah.
Okay, okay.
I think, I think the regular meeting, I gotta deal with this building over here. There's so much screwed up in the past. I don't even know how to fix it. It's just, it's all a little lonely. Things went on that shouldn't have happened. It was, it was like a village, it's got its problems.
I'm just happy to find...
The citizens there, they were the ones that created the situation. We lost an enormous amount of property that I could use for a septic. The fire department could use it. This building could use it. And that building can use it. From 1889 on, someplace in that timeframe, or maybe 1950, something went on the road. All of a sudden, that property went away. And I'm gathering that, and we're going way back. There was a sawmill over here, correct? Over there, in the 1800s. And they had to bring the logs in from the west, so they decided to cut through where the alley is. Pretty soon, it ended up being village property. And the 40 feet on the north of the alley disappeared into what is now Janet's property. I think we need to get that property back where it goes so we can have a septic field in these four buildings, or we should just tear them down. That's the way I feel.
Okay.
It's gonna involve lawyers because it is a touchy situation. I've got somebody you can talk to about this. It's our health department rep for this area. He could tell you the whole story on this. I don't even know if he knows the stuff in 1800s, but he discovered things here that shouldn't have been in the alley, but they are. And there happened to be, on my particular property, they put a catch basin in right behind the fireball that never caught any water. The water could never get to it. It turned out it wasn't for catching water. It was to get rid of sewage. I don't even want to say it, but that's what they discovered.
So...
We need to fix this.
Okay, so you are going to bring, are you going to bring a proposal to the next planning commission meeting? Like, something, I just want to be certain if we ask the planning commissioners to meet because sometimes we'll only meet four times a year if we don't have something on there. If you are coming to spitball, or are you kind of, we could probably just sit down outside of this and maybe have a one-on-one, you know, where a couple people could just sit down and meet with you, where we wouldn't need to bring the whole planning commission together? So, or are you planning on bringing, like, a proposal?
I don't even know what to say about it because it's really weird.
Okay, all right. It sounds...
We need to brainstorm and figure out how to solve this. We can't use this building because it doesn't have a septic field. Septic field never has. Fireball never had one. This one never had one. My building does have one, but it could be much, much bigger. I think I could have 37, 100 more feet of footage for a septic field if I got the property back that originally was there.
Okay.
I don't know how it would even disappear.
Okay, it sounds to me like, maybe since you don't have anything favored out, maybe I could ask some of the planning commissioners that are here right now if they would just want to sit down with you and me or on a one-on-one than in a structured meeting where we could, you could just tell us what you've got and we could just digest that information?
That would be wonderful.
Okay, why don't we do that?
I'd spend an hour and a half to... I'd spend an hour and a half if we register these and whatever is finding here.
All right, let's do that. I know where to find you. So I, after I speak with some of the other planning commissioners about some availability, maybe we could just sit down for an hour with you one day and go over it, okay? That it doesn't have to be an official meeting?
We should include the health department rep for this area. He's, he doesn't know what to do.
Okay, it's just a start for now. You know, if you want to just, however you want to do it, we'll come up with a date. So that being the case, right before we adjourn, being that this might be just kind of a private one-on-one, which might just be easier for us, and I don't think it requires a meeting, is there any items that would be on October's agenda that would cause us to need to meet? All right, so we could probably get a motion to not, not meet? In October?
Yeah.
And then you can pass it on to the village council at the next meeting?
No.
Is there anybody who would like to make a motion to cancel October's planning commission meeting? Okay, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to cancel October's planning commission meeting. Wait a second.
Second.
Have it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.